Good evening, Chair. Calls order, Board of Health update. Board of Health update, spring 2024. Council, we're delighted to see Ms. Austin in the chambers this evening and whenever you're ready, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening, Council President Vincentian, members of the council. Got this. So on our agenda today is we're going to talk about emergency preparedness, family health, population health, care coordination, environmental health, administration, clinical health, and behavioral health. The Hartford County Health Department with its community partners recently participated in two FEMA graded exercises. April 16th, the exercise was held at the Emergency Operations Center with agency partners and led by Rick Ayers, Director of Emergency Services for Hartford County. On April 17th, the exercise was held at Hartford Community College and led by Lisa Swank, Emergency Preparedness Coordinator for the Hartford County Health Department. These two individuals are incomparable in their fields, and I know I feel better knowing that they are in charge of emergency operations and preparedness. Lisa is right over there in the corner. The Health Department is responsible for setting up monitoring and decontamination centers. This part of the exercise was held at Hartford Community College. Hazmat is a strong community partner in our efforts to protect staff who would assist with the operation of a community radiological reception center. Routine training is provided to staff regarding the operation of monitoring equipment that would be used to detect the presence of contamination. In a real event, potassium iodide is provided to residents at a radiological reception center if it has been ordered by the county health officer during an event. Also, in a real event, the Health Department would have two monitoring and decontamination centers open, one at HCC and one at Fallston High. In April, our Healthy Families America program celebrated Public Health Week and Child Abuse Prevention Month. Pinwheels were planted throughout the front and back of the Health Department at our Edgewood location. The pinwheel was chosen by Prevent Child Abuse America as a national symbol to represent the playfulness, youthfulness, and innocence of childhood. Staff planted these pinwheels to honor the PCAAs mission to make sure all children are safe and well cared for. And you can see that we used a similar symbol for our Megan's Place program. As a reminder, Megan's Place is a safe space for pregnant and postpartum women with substance use disorders where they can gather in a supportive environment, receive resource information, and care coordination to meet their unique needs. For our Population Health Bureau, we have our IU We Matter Youth Symposium for middle and high school boys coming up. This will be held on Saturday, May 18th from 11:00 to 3:30 p.m. at the Ward Y in Abingdon. Included in this fun event are games, food, prizes, scavenger hunt, health education, and more. And as always, we are grateful to our partnership with the Ward Y in Abingdon, and we are happy to be holding this event for the third year in a row. We still have slots open, so spread the word. We can accommodate 100 students, and you all are invited to attend as well. This was a great event. The Health Department celebrated Minority Health Month with Dr. BK Edmund, anesthesiologist and author. The Health Department in Upper Chesapeake welcomed Dr. Edmund on Thursday, April 18th, for a vital discussion on Black maternal health. Dr. Edmund emphasized the crucial roles of midwives and doulas in ensuring healthy birth outcomes and fostering community wellness. Dr. Edmund led the discussion that included various organizations and health facilities and delved into the significance of Black maternal health. His impactful work extends to the realm of literature with two notable books, Nana and the Bushman, Bushwoman, and The Quiltmakers, where he sheds light on breast cancer and Black maternal health. While the event had a short pause due to technical difficulties, Rania came to the technical rescue, while Felicia Hopkins stood to the microphone for an unplanned rendition of My Living Shall Not Be in Vain, and Dr. Edmund was joined in her song, and it was just one of those moments. We added this slide because this program is so broad and can serve the entire county in a different capacity than some of our other programs. What is Care Coordination Plus? This program helps clients receive the care they need. Our care coordinators work with community agencies to connect clients with community resources. Anyone in Hartford County is eligible to receive Care Coordination Plus regardless of insurance status or location in the county. And so what can a client expect from their care coordinator? A care coordinator can facilitate access to care by connecting individuals to health insurance coverage. They can provide assistance in navigating a client's insurance benefits. They provide linkage to various community resources, including mental health, addictions, and clinical services. And they partner with Upper Chesapeake and the Comprehensive Care Center at the hospital to help facilitate additional healthcare needs. So this is the acute portion of our show. The Environmental Health Bureau conducted its first joint rabies vaccination clinic in conjunction with the Humane Society of Hartford County on Saturday, February 10th. The collaboration was a success, and 282 pets received their rabies vaccination. And I just got an email late this afternoon, and it included our regular Health Department clinics at various fire stations to a total of 666 rabies vaccines in 2024. And now you have to take the bad with the good as we discuss solid waste. The Environmental Health Bureau averages about 230 solid waste complaints per year. Since January, staff have already received, have already investigated 100 complaints. And here's the process. An investigation is conducted of the subject property, and if staff determine the contents observed as solid waste, they issue a notice of violation. Staff will re-inspect the property after the deadline outlined in the notice of violation. And if solid waste hasn't been removed, they will issue a referral to the Department of Public Works. DPW will issue a notice of abatement. If the solid waste is not removed by DPW's abatement deadline, DPW will remove the solid waste from the subject property and place a lien on the property. This is the most common method for resolution if the property owner does not comply. Out of our 230 average solid waste complaints per year, only about 25% are referred to And one more slide for environmental health. The Health Department's partnership with the county continues as we make progress in our transition to their enterprise permitting and licensing system, formerly known as EnterGov. This is a system for processing, tracking, and maintaining building permit and other environmental health department business practice, business process applications. The county has supported the Health Department by purchasing computer software, licenses for our environmental health staff, and tablet computers. An MOU was signed between the Health Department and the county on May 9th, 2023, and things have progressed since then. We're pleased to report that the Health Department is now entering building permits and inspection reports into the system, allowing for a much more streamlined process on our end and for the county. And this is just the timeline that I won't read because I did read that at the budget So here's our vital records. We have a new look there in the Vital Records Department. Due to the increased demand for walk-in birth and death certificate requests, Vital Records has expanded and improved its waiting room. Previously, we had clients lined up in a lobby area, so it made for a very unprofessional look. We continue to see Maryland residents from all counties because of our much appreciated walk-in service. And this, we have great news. You can now pay your bill online. This makes it convenient for our clients in our behavioral health clinic and our clinical health clinic programs to make their payments. And so now I'd like to bring Dr. Cybell up, Dr. Jamie Cybell. She's our Medical Deputy Health Officer, and she's going to give a clinical update of our clinical services program. And also, I want to wish all the nurses a Happy Nurses Week this week.
Thank you, Marcy. Good evening, members of the council. I am Jamie Cybell, a preventive medicine physician and the Medical Deputy Health Officer at the Hartford County Health Department. Today, I'm here to discuss several important health topics, but I would first like to highlight recent clinical health initiatives. You can go back. In April, the Health Department, in partnership with Hartford County Public Schools, hosted a successful vaccine clinic at Aberdeen Middle School for students entering 7th grade in the fall. Eighty-five vaccinations were provided to students in need. A similar clinic will be hosted in Edgewood this Thursday evening. The Hartford County Health Department Woodbridge location has expanded our family planning, STI, and pre-exposure prophylaxis clinical services to include two evenings a month with enhanced Spanish translation assistance provided by our bilingual medical assistant. This has been very successful in improving accessibility to our services throughout the Vaccine preventable diseases stand as one of the greatest public health achievements in the United States. Through vaccination, we have significantly reduced and in some cases eliminated many deadly diseases. By ensuring that children in our county are vaccinated, we not only protect them from illness, but also prevent infectious disease outbreaks in our schools and in our community. Our Vaccines for Children, or VFC, program plays a pivotal role in promoting health equity by providing vaccines to children whose families may face financial barriers. This program available at our Health Department ensures that all children have access to the vaccinations they need regardless of their insurance or financial circumstances. I'd like to highlight the most updated immunization schedule from the CDC regarding the vaccine schedule. At the Health Department, we adhere to these guidelines and provide comprehensive vaccination services. Our nurses meticulously review medical records and ensure that each child receives the appropriate vaccines at every visit. This includes adhering to the recommended vaccines from birth to six years and beyond as outlined in the schedule. For instance, it's essential to note that children entering kindergarten receive several doses of DTAP, Polio, MMR, Varicella, and Hep B vaccines as required by Maryland regulations for school entry. Here we see the recommended vaccines for ages seven to 18 years. For example, 11- and 12-year-olds are required to receive the T-DAP and the Ningjikakal vaccines and are recommended to receive the HPV vaccine. We provided these vaccines at Aberdeen Middle School, ensuring that our rising 7th graders are protected against preventable diseases. I'd like to share some vaccine data from the current school year. So far, we have vaccinated 541 children at the Health Department, with 292 of them benefiting from the VFC program. Notably, our efforts have reached a significant portion of the Spanish-speaking community, with 39% of our clients requiring bilingual assistance provided by our Spanish-speaking staff. Our collaborative efforts with Hartford County Public Schools have been instrumental, particularly during our fall 2023 Back to School Wellness Fair, where we provided vaccinations alongside other essential services to students and families from the Title I schools, and our Mass Flu Clinic at Patterson Mill, where we provided over 200 free-of-charge influenza Let's now address recent concerns regarding the H5N1 virus, also known as bird flu or avian influenza. While this virus poses a risk to farm animals, including outbreaks in cattle in the United States, there have been no known reported human-to-human transmissions. Nationwide data include one human case this year, nine states with outbreaks in cattle, and 36 dairy herds affected. All states have bird flu in wild birds, and almost all states have had poultry outbreaks. At present, there are no known cases of H5N1 infected in farm animals or in humans in Maryland. Nevertheless, it is crucial to adhere to safety protocols such as pasteurizing milk to mitigate any potential risk. Seen here is the H5N1 guidance for farm workers, which includes protective measures to follow. The Hartford County Health Department stays updated on this and other emerging trends through frequent communication with the Maryland Department of Health. And now I'd like to discuss another growing issue, which is the rise in cases of syphilis. This sexually transmitted infection caused by a bacteria can lead to severe health complications if left untreated, including during pregnancy. While it often starts as a painless sore or without symptoms, it can progress to systemic involvement. Early detection and treatment are paramount in preventing adverse outcomes such as congenital syphilis. At the Health Department, we offer comprehensive services, including screening, testing, treatment, and education to combat the spread of syphilis in our community. We have identified five to 10 cases in Hartford County per month for this year for a total of 30 cases. Delving further into the data, we see an increase in syphilis cases in Hartford County over the last several years. The number of cases seen in Hartford County during the first four months of this year is almost the total number of cases that we saw just in 2022. And as you can see here, this data just goes through 2022 because that is what the state is able to provide right now. However, there are greater rates of infection seen in Maryland and nationally compared to Hartford County. The Maryland case rate is about three times higher than the Hartford County rate, and the U.S. case rate is more than four times higher than the Hartford County rate. Our Health Department remains committed to providing accessible services, including screenings in the community, diagnostic services, and comprehensive treatment to address these concerning trends. Our ongoing efforts at the Hartford County Health Department underscore our commitment to promoting public health and safeguarding the well-being of this community. Thank you for your attention, and now I pass it back to our Health Officer, Marcy Austin, to conclude the presentation.
So on to our Behavioral Health Unit Bureau. We have a new program for seniors. The geriatric program provides comprehensive neurocognitive screenings and is for everyone aged 60 and up. It is a collaborative approach, which may include ongoing psychiatric assessment, medication management services, individual and group therapy sessions, and potential neuropsychiatric testing customized to individual treatment needs. Part of this program is a specialty mental health group focused only on females aged 60 and above. This year, our Behavioral Health Bureau began providing the intensive outpatient program for youth and adolescents aged 13 to 17. The IOP includes six-plus hours of in-person weekly group, and they meet on Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays from 4:30 to 6:45. A step down to a weekly Level One Virtual Outpatient Youth and Adolescent Group is available upon completion of the IOP. In addition to this, our Free-to-Be Group for LGBTQ+ teens ages 12 to 17 continues to be a huge success with over 20 students now attending. This group meets once a month. And I hope this is a surprise, but here we go, finally, and I hope we pulled this off. I would like to personally and also on behalf of our staff, thank Inez Dunmire for the incredible work she has done for this Health Department. I believe her husband and son are in the audience, and maybe a friend, Kelly Nelson, and many of her coworkers. Inez has a true public health spirit and only thinks of others. We will be losing her to the state of Texas, where she will be moving with her husband and son to live near their daughter, son-in-law, and her little grandbaby, Luna. Inez has only been with the Health Department for five short years, but what she has done, both at work and after-hours, is nothing short of amazing. Inez has demonstrated unparalleled passion for her work in the Behavioral Health Bureau. In addition to her duties there, she was instrumental in program development, outreach efforts, and continuous care coordination efforts for the Health Department's Nuestro Community Dodd Program, which consists of a team of passionate bilingual staff dedicated to helping the Latino community. Her work with this community has gone well beyond her regular work hours, as she has helped plan and participate in numerous after-hours events to support the population. This is her passion, and we see it every day. She thanks us endlessly for the opportunity to work with this population, but we see it differently. We thank her. Her dedication to Hartford County Health Department, Behavioral Health Bureau, and the community has been constant. She has another talent that we will miss, and that is her cooking. I have been told that cooking is her love language, and I have been fortunate enough to be on the receiving end of that. So make friends with her quickly, and you might just get the world's best empanada. Inez, we love you, we respect you, and we will miss you greatly. In recognition of your work, the County Council has signed and would like to present a proclamation of your commitment and dedication to the citizens of Hartford County.
Ms. Dunmire, can I have you up front, please?
Be it hereby known that the County Council of Hartford County, Maryland, on the 7th day of May 2024, recognizes Inez Dunmire, Administrative Specialist, Hartford County Health Department, five years of service for her unparalleled passion for her work in the Behavioral Health Bureau of Hartford County Health Department. Thank you for your commitment and dedication to serving the citizens of Hartford County. We extend our best wishes for success in all her future endeavors. Baked or fried?
Fried.
Fried? Chicken or beef?
Fried.
Fried turkey? Okay, I'm in.
So my colleagues and I want to thank you for your service to the Health Department, for the county, for its citizens, and for those that you helped special for the past five years. And Marcy asked us to present you with this, and we wanted to do that for sure. So again, on behalf of my colleagues, please accept this citation from the County Council.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Can I hug you?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Henry. Do you want to know? Sure.
You guys come up, the Health Department staff. You have to get your picture taken.
Muchas gracias.
Come on.
You may want to say something.
Oh. This might take a while.
Yeah, she had so much attention.
Need to tell him to scoot. Tighten up, Stine. Good? You good, sir? Would you like to say a few words?
I'm usually the one giving the surprises. This is shocking.
I guess.
I would like to thank my second family. That's how I see you all. This has been a very difficult decision. Leaving people like you, Kelly. But I just need to be with my daughter and my grandbaby. But I definitely enjoy every second, every minute that I spend with people like you. Because in my interview to Andrea, the first interview, I said, I don't know anything about mental health, I don't know anything about addictions, but I do know that my people, the population of Hartford County, do suffer from all those conditions. They just don't have access. So if you promise me that you will work on that, I'm yours. And I've been there five years. You guys have done an amazing job giving access to mental health, especially to some of our population. So that's the reward I get. I don't care if I work 50 hours, I don't care, I just have completely, absolutely loved working for the Health Department. I used to always hear, like, not the greatest names, and I'd say, I'm gonna just check it out. And honestly, had it not been for, you know, to be closer to family, I would probably conceive myself being here for years. And so it's gonna be extremely hard, but like I said, I do the toy drive every Christmas.
of Hartford County. Mr. Janardano?
I already have my ticket to come back and help with that, so I have no problem jumping
Council President, I move to approve the new appointment of April Ishack.
on a plane to do anything with you guys.
May I have a second?
Second.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the new appointment of Ms. Ishack.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Janardano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Great appointment. Aye.
Mrs. Bill Sodles?
Abstain.
Mr. Bennett?
Second, or aye? I already seconded. I vote yes.
We have six votes in the affirmative, one abstention. The appointment is hereby approved. Ms. Ishack, is she here? I don't see her. But thank you very much, Ms. Austin. Council members, anyone have any questions of Ms. Austin? Mr. Penman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Marcy, thank you for your presentation. Just had, just one quick question, you know, with mental health, one of the, you know, issues in the county and across our nation, and there's discussion about possibly a co-responder program, and I know the Health Department will be key to that conversation going forward, especially with the settlement money that the county is getting. So has there been any conversation about co-responder and what level that would look like?
Somebody mentioned it to me and said there would be a meeting, but I haven't heard of the meeting yet, so I guess that's coming.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Riley?
Marcy, I can't let it go. I'm still looking for stuff in the northern end of the district.
Care coordination.
Okay, I know it's not flashy, and it's not the, but we need some help up north, and so whatever you can do for us, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Marcy, as always, we appreciate all that you and your dedicated team at the Health Department do to serve the citizens of this county each and every day.
Yeah.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Council, we'll go ahead and move on to our public hearings. So Chair will call to order public hearing for Resolution 009-24, Authorization Application for the Statewide Special Transportation Assistance Program. Ms. Richardson, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Just fine.
Good evening, Council President, Council Members. I'm here to request, on behalf of Hartford County, your support of Resolution 009-24, which is authorizing Hartford County to apply for funding from the Maryland Transit Administration of the Maryland Department of Transportation for statewide special transportation assistance program. Basically, this is a resolution allowing the Hartford Transit, on behalf of Hartford County, to apply for federal and state funding that supports our Hartford Transit Link bus system. So the current application that we want to send over to the state would request about $175,000 in demand response funding, which is the maximum allowable, 4.8 million in federal and state operating funds for fixed routes and ADA paratransit service, and $900,000 in federal and state capital funding for maintenance of transit fleet. And if you support this resolution, as other funding opportunities become available, that would allow Hartford County to apply for any grants through the state or the feds.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. And ridership is still a major part of this, right?
Yes, and ridership is actually back to pre-COVID levels. It had gone down for the last couple of years, but we are
Council, we'll go ahead and move on to our public hearings. So the chair will call to order a public hearing for Resolution 009-24, Authorization Application for the Statewide Special Transportation Assistance Program. Ms. Richardson, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Just fine.
Good evening, Council President, council members. I'm here to request, on behalf of Harford County, your support of Resolution 009-24, which is authorizing Harford County to apply for funding from the Maryland Transit Administration of the Maryland Department of Transportation for statewide special transportation assistance program. Basically, this is a resolution allowing the Harford Transit, on behalf of Harford County, to apply for federal and state funding that supports our Harford Transit Link bus system. So the current application that we want to send over to the state would request about $175,000 in demand response funding, which is the maximum allowable, 4.8 million in federal and state operating funds for fixed routes and ADA paratransit service, and $900,000 in federal and state capital funding for maintenance of transit fleet. And if you support this resolution, as other funding opportunities become available, that would allow Harford County to apply for any grants through the state or the feds.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. And ridership is still a major part of this, right?
Yes. And ridership is actually back to pre-COVID levels. It had gone down for the last couple of years, but we are seeing now an increase, and it continues every month to go up.
Thank you. Council, any questions, comments? Mr. Janjordano?
Hi, Barbara. Good afternoon, good evening. Is there a certain pool of money that we're competing against other municipalities, counties for?
Yes.
So what helps us over the top in getting that? Is it just?
We have an outstanding transit department, an award-winning Harford Transit. Typically, we get our full, we, there's a maximum amount that we can apply for, and in the last several years, we have always received that amount.
Do we need to enlist our senators and delegates to help push for this as well?
I'm sure it can't hurt. So, but typically, we receive the full amount, but I would say any favors you have, always worth calling in.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that, I don't know if it's a level playing field or anything extra, and who makes the decision, and if there was a pool of money being split up, but it's nice to see that we always get our maximum funding.
We do well.
Thank you.
Mr. Bennett?
Hello. Thank you for being here. My question is, what is that maximum amount? And then what's the match required from us at the local level? I saw that in years past.
So there's a 25% local match for certain portions of the grant. So I think it's just for the $175,000. So in general, we use that to match to send, there's required trainings that bus drivers then have to go to, so we usually put that match towards those trainings and things.
And is that a match already baked into the budget for?
I believe so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Penman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for being here. Just a question. It looks like the financial analysis that was done by the county auditor states for transit projects in fiscal year 24, Harford County expects to receive 3.5 million in state and federal grants requiring a local match of 5.4 million.
That local match had to do with some bigger grants that we were, had received in years past, and that was going to go towards the development or building of a new center down in, a new transit center. We are no longer, that project has put on hold, so we will not be able to borrow with that.
And I'm not saying I'm not advocating for this grant. You know, I am. You know, even if we have to match, but I know there was a discussion during the budget hearings about the library not being, or take advantage of a pretty incredible grant because of the match funding. So if by chance, could you provide a more detailed list of what the matching grant would be total?
Can I, I will certainly get that to you at a later date.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
I need to call on my transit administrator, Mr. Blazinski, who is the whiz with that. But I believe that match now is going to go, was already funded, so I think, I believe, it's going to go to purchase new buses. Our fleet is very old. We have a lot of aging buses, so that we're going to use that money. But I will certainly send a more detailed.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson.
Thank you. Anyone else? Are there anyone signed up?
There is no speakers, Mr. President.
Well, this will go ahead and conclude the public hearing on Resolution 009-24, and we will take a look at a later meeting.
Right. Thank you.
We'll move on to Bill 24-010, Flood Plane Management. Mr. Davenport, whenever you're ready, sir? Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Council President, council, we're introducing this bill. It's very straightforward, super straightforward. We are participants in the National Flood Insurance Program, and along with that, we have, they have a community rating system that regulates or analyzes our program that we have. In 2021, that community rating system changed the manual with regards to credits given to communities that have the flood ordinances and participate in the National Flood Insurance Rate Programs. Subsequently, they have asked us, they evaluate our program regularly, and they indicated to us that they have changed their program or its manual with regards to the credits given to communities that elevate service equipment, which are primarily HVAC and equipment, electrical equipment and boxes above the floodplain elevations. Our current program allows for alternatives to the elevation of those electrical boxes and services, and they've asked us to reevaluate or eliminate that exception in our program. So this proposed ordinance actually just eliminates the alternative to elevating those services above the base flood elevations, so that you can't put your HVAC units or services below the required elevations. We enjoy credits from that program, so our community property owners and citizens enjoy credits. Right now, it's a 15% reduction in their flood insurance rate, flood insurance rates. It would go down to 5% if we didn't do this. So additionally, it's important that our building code doesn't allow it regardless. So, but not every jurisdiction has the same building code that we do. They asked for us to participate, they're asking us to comply and change our code. So that's what, that's what this particular provision does.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport. Mr. Janjordano?
Mo, good evening. So does that also include the municipalities, like Havertay Grace? Because I know that's probably one of the biggest areas where there is buildings, where there's potential flooding from.
Right.
So it does, is that incorporated into the municipalities, this, or are they going to file something different?
I'm gonna ask Matt Cropp, sorry.
It's okay.
Sorry. Matt is our floodplain manager with Department of Planning and Zoning.
Because they've changed around flood the last couple of years and base flood elevation, and now they don't look at that so much as how close you are to the source of the water. And it's become a, it's become a little bit of a problem for some people with the rates for flood insurance.
Yeah, so each municipality is its own community in the National Flood Insurance Program. So this code change only applies to Harford County. I'm not saying they're not going to ask the same thing for Havertay Grace to do, and they probably will, because they're going to lose the credit also.
Yeah.
So it's just for Harford County, not the municipalities.
Do they have to have an elevation certificate going forward? Because a lot of people don't have elevation certificates. So therefore, if they don't have an elevation certificate, they're not going to get the 15% credit, correct?
Elevation certificates are required by us for all substantial improvements, substantially improved structures and new structures. Yes.
And the cost of an elevation certificate has gone up exponentially over the last three or four years. They used to run somewhere in the $700 range, and now they're like up around 1,500 to 1,800. So.
Along with everything else.
Well, that's a big increase. I understand. But, you know, so that, just want to make sure that I'm clear, and some of my colleagues are clear on what that, what that does. I mean, obviously, I want to see people get the credit, but I also wanted to see if they had to have the elevation certificate, because some people from prior grandfathered in didn't need elevation certificates. And there's also some places that didn't get elevation certificates, and places in Havertay Grace, they didn't get them, and they don't have them on some of these condos, and it's become a little bit of an issue. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there anyone signed up?
No. No one signed up.
Okay. This will go ahead and conclude this public hearing as well for Bill 24-010, and it'll also be taken up at a later date. Thank you. We'll move right into Bill 24-011, Sentiment Control. Councilman Guthrie, whenever you're ready, sir?
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill is to restore something that the prior administration under the county executive removed from our law. For generations and generations, the law had in it that when you construct, when you build a, when you're building a housing development, that the maximum that you could grade at a given time to put up this construction site or these houses was 20 acres. And that was to provide, excluding a runoff that we've experienced ever since Hackley Reserve put the first shovel in the ground on 152. The law read, and it's going back as far as I can find it, and also I asked Charlie Kearney, our attorney, to check the law also to go back to find out how long the 20-acre requirement was in the law, and it goes back as far as, nobody, nobody in Harford County was alive when the law was put in, let's put it that way. And again, the purpose is to stop a runoff of what you're going to see in a number of pictures I'm going to provide for tonight's. Now, I didn't bring them all, because I literally have hundreds and hundreds, if not a thousand pictures, that the residents in the entire area have taken over this botch of a development that, and I would recommend highly to the county executive or whoever it needs to, that this developer should not be allowed to develop in Harford County, again, in the history of our county. This bill is probably one of the most important bills that this council will look at for future development of this county. If we wanted to continue to develop this county in a proper sequence versus what is going on right now, then we need to put the 20-acre requirement back into the law. It's been there for generations. There hasn't been a complaint from any contractor up to 2017, when the Hackley Reserve, I guess, approached the county executive to put in that amendment to the bill to remove the 20-acre requirement. To give you an example of what I'm talking about, in the state of Maryland, the following counties have the 20-acre requirement: Allegheny County, Arundel County, Anarundel County, Baltimore County, Calvert County, Caroline County, Calvert County, Cecil County, Charles County, Dorchester County, Frederick County, Garrett County, Howard County, Kent County, Montgomery County, Prince George's County, Queens' Anne's County, Somerset County, Talbot County, Washington County, and Waukesha, Monmouth County. They all have that 20 acres for some reason, and it's for this reason that you're going to see. Currently, the code defines a grading unit as a maximum continuous area allowed to be graded at a given time. This bill would change the definition of a grading unit to areas to 20 acre, acres or less. In addition, the bill would increase the total and individual civic fines amounts while reducing the period between subsequent increasing fine amounts.
Mr. Guthrie, hold on just a minute. Sir, find a seat, please. Sorry, Mr. Guthrie.
It's okay. In each, each level of the possible fines, in my bill, I have doubled the fines in each category. Now, first off, we don't want to collect a penny in fines. Not a penny do we want to collect. If they are binding by the law and binding by what they should be doing in this county, then we won't collect any money, and we're not interested. Okay? According to Department of Public Works, since fiscal year 2022, there had been two civil fines of $10,000 each. Guess who those two $10,000 fines were put on? They were put on Hackley Reserve. If the frequency and nature of the fines held constant, the county would receive an additional $20,000 in revenue for the next three fiscal years, or an average of approximately $7,000 in annual revenue, revenue annually. Well, guess what? It's going to cost us about $1.1 million to dredge the Gunpowder River. That's the estimate I've gotten up to this point. And they have dumped tons and tons and gallons. You're going to see some pictures that you're not going to believe. I believe that this bill, and I got some argument with some contractors, I believe this bill helps a smaller contractor. Because what happens, the big contractor can come in, just like Hackley Reserve, and we have another big project of about 129 acres. It's in my district also, right above 924 and 24, that could be in the same situation. So that also concerns me, like it should concern all the council members anywhere in their county, in their districts. You'll see the first picture that you have up there, that's the Gunpowder River coming into the Rumsey Island-Joppetown area. You'll see the mud approaching. This is almost like sci-fi, almost, when you look at this. There's the mud coming. Next picture? This is further up. It's coming up into the canal, up into the Joppetown, Rumsey Island area. Next picture? Boom. Look at that. The entire area, this is within a few hours, the entire area of Joppetown, Rumsey Island, the Gunpowder River, all the way out to, and you'll see that in some more photos, all the way out to the bridge, the Redwood Bridge that goes across the Gunpowder River. If you're familiar with that area, that's a huge area, and you're going to see a photo in a little bit where that entire area is covered in mud water. Now, what happens when this, next picture? This is further out. You invest your money and buy a home on a water like that, you're paying, of course, more for the home, and you're paying higher taxes. And this is what you're gonna come out and look at. Well, guess what? We've had, we've had, we've got engineers in our Rumsey Island Resident Association, and they test this water frequently, because when it gets like that, you can't swim in it. We can't let the kids or our grandkids go out in the water, because it's literally polluted, or they'll get, they'll come out and the kids will get sick by swimming in it. So this has now been going on for three years. What you see has been going on, on and off every time it rains. Not only that, that's mud. And what that's going to do, that's going to sink sooner or later, and it's going on the bottom, and then we got to dredge it, and now we're at a million dollars, and this guy gets fined 20,000. It's chump change to him. You know, it's like following, it's like following, or suing Trump for 20,000. Excuse me, I'm going to get into politics. The Bay Journal report on October 27, 2023, said, and in there, that picture's not up there, but there's the mud bath coming down the Gunpowder. It says, "Maryland River turns orange for alarming reasons. The pollution from this site is so bad, you can see it from outer space." In Maryland, muddy runoff from construction sites seem to be suffocating the once lavish underwater prairie-like ecosystem, endangering the fish and other adequate aqua animals. What's happening? The Maryland Gunpowder River, part of the Chesapeake Bay watershed, was once home of a lavish submerged grasses that hosted much wildlife, including fish and crabs. Now, the underwater prairie has all but disappeared, and once clear water has turned into a mucky orange color, as the Bay Journal reports. The apparent culprit, muddy runoff from this large housing development called Richly Reserve. More than 100 acres of trees and other vegetation were cleared there early in 2022. The exposed soil, with nothing to hold it down, now runs down the river when snow melts or in rainfall. Next slide. That's supposed to be a stream, and that's coming right through, right through our area. Let me catch up. That's above Copenhagen Park, which is, that photo was taken October 22. The photo just below it, that's where, that's where the piping, the water and the sewer lines have come down. They have to take it from Richly Reserve, by the way, it's on 152 near Route 40. They have to come down there, and it come down the back, kind of the backwoods. They got to come all the way down to Joppetown, come down past the They got to come all the way down to Joppetown, come down past the, uh, football field, the whole length of the football field, and then cut in, 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 across the football field over to get hooked up to the sewer and water. And they, they, that's what it looked like. They didn't do a thing to fix that or, or put the grass back or, or plant anything. And that's where also a lot of the runoff came from. That passes the football field and what happened, when it, what they did also, there was a drainage there. And that drainage was when it rained and all, the water ran down the drainage and ran into the creek, which ran into the, to the, uh, uh, Ramsey Island, Joppetown water, water. But it didn't take any of the mud with it. When they did this, they took that, uh, uh, that ditch out, basically. And then when it rained, the water ran all over the football field and the entire football field got flooded. They couldn't play football. And, and the, the guys running the, the program down there, they bring their own generators and, and pumps and all to bring it over to pump the water off the football field so, so they could play football. Uh, I've got the, I got the administration all that go down there and take care of that. And they got that taken care of, so now the water runs off correctly. Uh, next photo. Now, this is the top photo. We'll look at that for a minute. That's what it looks like coming right out of, to the right-hand side of that is, is the, is the Gunpowder, uh, River coming out into the opening part and to that. All the way in the back, which you can hardly see, is the, is the, uh, a bridge, the railroad bridge. That's what it normally looks like. Next photo. That's what it looks like when it rains. Uh, water from Foster Branch as it merges with Town Creek in the mouth of the little gunpowder. And again, you can see the bridge behind it. Next photo. This is what our streams normally look like, uh, before Hackley Reserve did their thing. Next photo. And this is what it looks like now. Next one. More of the same stream, all that running right down into the Gunpowder River. Good next. Same here. One more. Now, the next photo, go to the next one, and then we'll hold it up there. This, this is a photo I've just taken two weeks ago when I was coming down 152 and I saw this. They're now cleaning all this other area to build more houses. And you notice the only place you can see any, any fencing is right at the bottom, maybe 20, 30 feet. That whole area is cleared out on both sides, as you noticed. And that is nothing but clay and mud. And when it rains, you know, that's all going to wash down. Nobody's doing anything to force them to put up the fencing that normally you have to put on both sides of, of, of a project like that. That's just two weeks ago. Next photo. Now, right in smack dab in the middle there, you see the 120-some acres that they cleared all at one time. That's what happens when you take out the 20 acre grading, uh, requirement. With that, 100-and-some acres, you would only been able to do 20 acres at a time or five or six times you'd have to go through the process. That's why it helps the, the smaller guy, because the smaller guy contractor, he only has 20 acres or so, uh, to build. He can be on par with the, the big contractor like this. Now, that they, now that the county gave him permission to, to do that, they, when they took the 20 acres out, they didn't even put anything else in. They just removed the 20 acres, then you put 30, or 40, or 50, or 100. It's nothing. So you can grade, you can now grade in Harford County. You can grade any area you want, no matter how big it is. And there's no, uh, uh, no requirement from the county for you to stop that. The fines aren't enough. It's, it's, it's peanuts. And, and before that, they had a, they had what they called an N R D in place, a Natural Resource District. And they allowed the contractor to decide that, uh, you can have an N R D district, which is Natural Resource District. Well, if you look at the county's paperwork, the Natural Resource District is a district that has a stream running through it, has deer jumping over it, little turtles coming out, you see fish. That's an N R D district. Tell me where you're going to see that on that map where that, where all that work's done, that that's an N R A district. But he was allowed to do that. Now, here's what that meant. He was allowed to do an N R D district meant that he's in an R1. If you know, if you know your codes, R1 is single-family homes, supposedly. So I mean, if you got the money and you want to buy a single-family home, you expect to move into a district that has single-family homes, you want them all to be single-family homes. Well, that's R1. People bought homes in there and they, and the advertisement up on the road on 152 says, "Single-family homes from 300,000 up." That's what the sign says. Don't tell them they're going to build 188 townhomes in there, but that's what the N R D district allowed them to do. Uh, they no longer have to build only single-family homes in that R1, which would, which would have maximum would have been 300 homes. Once they got the N R D, they can now, they now only built 200 homes, and they built 188 townhomes. Nothing wrong with a townhome. I've been in one for, me and my wife and family for years. You know, we don't live in one now, but we did. There's nothing wrong with it. But you got to, you should know. So what happens in this kind of, uh, development? If you do the mathematics about cars, if you got 300 homes, you may, maybe got 600 cars. Now, you, you build it this way, you got 1,000. Right there, 1, Route 40, 152, which is busy as hell right now, you're dumping, you're going to dump another 1,000 cars in it. Next one. This is Foster Branch, uh, which more, another stream showing the water running down to the Gunpowder River. I'm going to hold the last one, hold the last one for a couple of minutes. Now, the last one, when we get to the last one, uh, you're, you're going to be in awe when you see this photo. You really are. Because it is a massive amount of water. And by the way, this is running down to Baltimore County. Baltimore County's now involved in this because there's a, there's a councilman down there that, that we've been working with because this muddy water is running into Baltimore County. And you're going to see this in the next photo. Next photo. Look at that. Can you imagine this one development running into the Gunpowder River? Can do all that damage? That's the, that's the Ramsey Island Railroad Bridge. Excuse me. That, that's the railroad bridge that goes across the Gunpowder River. And on the right-hand side of that down is, is Baltimore County. And all that mud and all is running down there. Now, they are, they are complaining, uh, about the situation. So, uh, I only hope that, uh, the, the council members look at this and understand. About four or five of us actually have, uh, um, in a development envelope. It is probably a big, bigger concern to us than anybody outside the development envelope because you can't build that many houses in a, uh, in a 20 or, or 100 acre plate. You can only do single-family homes and they're, they're, they're spread out. But, uh, when you get into areas like this and, and development envelope, this is what you can have if you don't properly develop your county. And this is what we're going to have if we allow this 20, this non-20 acres to, to, uh, stay in, in the law in Harford County. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Uh, any other council members? Mr. Pennman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Guthrie, I, I understand, um, the concern. I understand the reason for the legislation, but, and I, I just want to try to fully understand the legislation and the full impact of the legislation. So, but before we get there, um, do we have current regulations in code that would require, when they're excavating land, to put up the retention so we don't have the runoff?
There is, yes, there's, there's some in there, but when you, and, but that, that, all those laws that were in effect about, uh, retention and, and, uh, controlling the water and all that were developed for 20 acre plots, not for 100 and 120 acre plots. That, what is in place now will not control when a contractor comes in and clears 100 acres at a time. It's, it's not. The law's in place now, it won't control that.
My concern is, you know, this, uh, developer definitely violated the code, right? Violated the trust. And he was, and he was fined or they were fined. But if someone's going to break the code and not follow the regulations, whether it's 20 acres or not, they're, they're going to do that and they, they should be held accountable. So, um, if, if you just, you know, reduce it to 20 acres, they could very well still do the same thing. Now, also, uh, during the budget hearings, um, the Director of Public Works, Mr. Seemec, mentioned that, um, all of this brown water was predominantly from upriver outside of our jurisdiction. While the originally reserve contributed to that, um, you know, majority of came from further up the river.
No, that's, that's a 90%. 90% of this came from Hackley Reserve.
I, I think.
There's no way for it to come up, if you're, if you know anything about that waterway from that bridge inward, okay? It's nothing but dead-end land. It's, if you, if I had a full picture, uh, can you back that up a picture? Myles, can you back that up one? Keep going. Now, you look at that. Now, you look at that, what you see, uh, uh, on top there, there's the waterway, okay? There's the bridge. You see the bridge? The bridge is right there in the middle of the top of the picture. That's the railroad bridge. To the right of that, that's, uh, the Gunpowder River and the Ramsey Island. If that went back a little further, you'll see the end of land. So there's no place else for that runoff to come from except right there. And we have, we even have more pictures and I, and I think that we're going to have people testify here also. You're, you're going to hear from them. We even have some more pictures, which I can provide for you, uh, uh, before time comes to vote on it. It will show you an aerial view because, uh, the, the administration appointed Joe Woods and a number of his people to come down to the area and, and, uh, trace out the whole area with drones and everything else. And they flew drones over this whole area. And, and the drones picked up the, the streams running down from that development, going right down into that water. And if you see that bridge, there's no way that water isn't, the, the, the mud isn't coming from up there. Right up the top of there, you see Maxwell Point, uh, uh, and, and goes out to the bay. Water ain't coming down there. Water is going from here out, not the other way. The only way, you know, to, to say the majority come from somewhere else, you don't know what he's talking about. You got to go down there and look at it and, and, and drive around it. And you would see, uh, without question, everything's coming from that site. 90% of any way.
I, I'm just, I'm just relying on him as a subject matter expert that says they use drones, uh, and their equipment to determine that most of it was coming from outside of our jurisdiction. That, that, just, just kind of relying on that. No, so just moving on.
Geographically, that's impossible. That is absolutely impossible. The only way for it to come another direction is way out there to the upper left. You know, and you'd have to get out to the bay and get, come down Bush River and come up. And you talk to somebody who's lived there for 58 years and a boater myself, so I know that all that entire area like the back of my hand. And that there's no other place for it to come from except right there.
What happens if there is a structure, the footprint of a structure is larger than 20 acres? Let's say you have a manufacturer, manufacturing building being built. And that structure is larger than 20 acres. How, how would this work then?
Uh, 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 structure isn't, isn't, uh, uh, isn't a housing development. That's entirely different type of development. Uh, we've never had a problem with that before. And we never had a problem like this as long as that 20 acres was in place. So, uh, uh, they.
This isn't just for residential. This is just for any development whatsoever.
Correct.
So if you had, you know, a manufacturing building for tech jobs and that structure is larger than 20 acres, how would, how would we work around that?
Where would you get, how big of a building would you need to cover 20 acres?
Well, I, I'm, I'm just going from the conversation with, so now I know the warehousing was changed, but they're still open to, um, manufacturing up to a million square foot building. So, you know, you get a million square foot building along with the parking area around it. That, that footprint is going to be pretty large.
You don't do, you don't do, if you're building 388 houses compared to one building, I mean, I don't think it's any comparison whatsoever. You, you've got to build, if you're building, uh, 388 homes, you got to have water to them. You got to have sewer to them. You got to have an electric to them. You've got to do a lot to, to, uh, uh, construct that many houses. Not to mention how many people you have working in the area and how many roads you have to put in. You don't have all those issues when you're building, you put up a building. Now, I don't know how many, I'm, I'm not a professional about knowing how many acres it takes to put up a building of, of, uh, 100,000 square feet or whatever you're talking about. Uh, I know with the Perryman thing, we, the, the limit we put was 250,000 square feet. I'm sure that doesn't take 20 acres. Because you don't have, all, all those buildings I've seen from, from the, the pictures, uh, of what's happening in Perryman, I don't even know if that whole, uh, I don't have, maybe, uh, Benny could tell us how many acres they're talking about up there. But I don't, I don't, I don't think it equates it to when you're talking about building 388 single-family homes or townhomes and single-family.
Speaking of, you know, uh, experts, you know, I know, uh, you spoke to community members and, uh, they're rightfully, uh, concerned. But have you spoke to any professionals in the site work, excavate, excuse me, excavation contractors, engineers?
You're going to have a couple of engineers testify tonight. We have, uh, several engineers in our, uh, Ramsey Island Resident, uh, Association. I'm on the board. Uh, we have people who test the water all the time, professional testers, that decide whether we can let our grandchildren or children swim in it. And it's, and it's polluted and it won't work. You, you're going to hear some of that testimony.
So, just so I understand, um, let's just say you have this 100 acres. So they're, they're going to have to do 20 acres at a time, build the homes completely with, you know, asphalt, structures, and then move on to the next 20 acres. Is, would that be right?
That's, that's the way it was for generations. Have any problems, the contractors, for all them years, all the way back to as far as we know, never had a problem with that bill. That's been in the bill up to 2017 until a previous administration took it out.
Uh, again, I'm, I'm not an expert, but you know, um, just thinking about the concerns of, um, the impact where they use dirt from one side and, and push it to the other, uh, so they have proper drainage. So if they were not able to, you know, get the full scale and push that dirt, uh, to level things, and make sure that they don't have erosion issues in the future, you know, that's just one consideration that, that's popped in my mind. And then the other, just, and I'll close with this, is just the economic impact, right? So what is it going to cost and how, you know, on each development to prolong this thing? The developer's not going to eat the cost. It's going to be the consumer. And if the, if it costs more for the houses being built, they're going to charge more. So now we have an issue right now where the cost of living is, is growing, right? And people can't afford homes. And if we add this cost on to our community members, um, it's, it's going to have an impact. It's going to have an impact on economic development in Harford County. And we're already having a conversation about stretching every dollar that we have as far as property tax and, um, income and tax.
So you, you have, so what I'm getting from you is you have no concern about the, about the water or the climate of, of our county. Because if you, you have not had a, a, a problem in over 100 years in the county. We never had a problem like this. And, and again, I've lived in Joppetown for 58 years. I've been on the water for, for 42 years of that. We've never, never had a, a, a flood or a browning of the water like that ever in the whole 50 years I, 58 years I lived here until that development came. What is the difference? They're allowing to clean, clear 120 acres versus 20 acres. You clear 20 acres, you can take, charge it. You can take control of it. You can't control. You can't control 100 acres once you clear it, and, and you have a massive amount of land like that open to drainage every time it rains. You can't put the houses up quick enough to cover that land so it won't drain. It's impossible. It's cheaper for them to go and clear all that, yeah, do they make it? Let me tell you something, I didn't see them put that savings that that developer got from clearing that land, those houses were all three, four, $500,000. I, I didn't notice any downgrading of, of the cost of the homes. It's, it's all there. You, you, how you can equate and compare clearing 120 acres compared to 20 acres, you, you gotta know, you can't control that. And that's exactly what happened. Thank God Salvo Property sold their property to the county, 'cause that's right alongside of that, that's another 120, 19 acres that was gonna be built with homes. Guess what? They can clear it, there's another 120 acres right up, above 924 and 24, right up there. That's, uh, 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 gonna be developed somehow or the other, and we don't know yet, there's a lot of arguments about going on, what's gonna go up on that prop, but it's enough. They can go, if they start tomorrow, they can clear that whole 120-some acres, boy, let me tell you, there'd be more streams and, and water running down the county hills than you can imagine.
No, I'm not advocating for runoff, and, and this property owner, developer should be held accountable for the impact they've had on our local environment. My, my questions are, you know, if the regulations that we currently have on code were enforced, then would this have even happened? And, you know, across the whole county, when this is done, you know, large plots of land are developed and cleared, you know, what measures are they? Are they following the guidelines of the code and the regulations to where this doesn't happen, but because this, you know, one development, you know, was cavalier on, you know, when they cleared this land, you know, they should be held accountable. But across the board, is it a problem at a problem? That's all I'm saying. So with that, I'll, I'll close for any other question.
But the bottom line is, there's just, in a massive development like this, and, and the counties find them, the state's been on them, they've been shut down, you name it, it's happened. But when you talk about something this big, with this large of a contractor, to find them 20,000, peanuts, peanuts. Now, my bill develop, doubles all the fines also, that's in the bill, but even at that, you, you could quadruple, and, and it, and it wouldn't be enough. Because you're talking about, you're talking about a million dollars to dredge the, the, the Gunpowder River when it's, when it's time to dredge it, which is now gonna be a lot sooner than it was before. You know, all that mud comes in there, and, and you talk about what it does to the economy, here's what it's done to the economy. You fill that whole river up, you know, with that mud, stops all boating. There's probably a thousand boats, you know, in that area, and, and the reason it stops boating is because anybody that has boats knows what I'm talking about. When you're, when you're running out there and you've got your motors running in that boat, it sucks up the water that's got all this mud in it, and it goes right through your engine, and you pump it out the back through the exhaust. That mud drops in your engine, and now you're gonna have all kind of engine problems. On top of that, the marina there just closed. May 1, they shut down the marina there in Joppa Town. They said because, and I talked to the, the guy that handles all that real estate for all Marine Macs, and he said, well, he's tired with the bridge situation, of course, that might be fixed because they're gonna replace all the railroad bridges in, from New York to Baltimore, but he said he's tired of that, and he's tired of the mud coming through there, for, he said for the last three years, they've taken a substantial reduction in their income, because when, when that mud comes down like it's been coming down, boaters all stop, because they know what's gonna do to their engines if they take it out there and pump all that muddy water through their, through their, through their engines. Not only that, they're not selling gas, they sell gas there, boats aren't going out, they ain't burning gas. And what happens also, they don't burn gas, they don't run out there, they ain't breaking down, so now they don't have boats to, to repair. So they gave up, and they said, heck with it, we're, we shut it down. They shut it down, May 1, you go down there right now, that, there's 100 and some boat slips down, ain't a single boat in that Joppa Town Marina. That's, you talk about our economy hit, and what that, that's gonna do to the, to the Joppa Town area, we have restaurants down there, we have gas stations down there, because a lot of the boaters there also have boats on trailers, so they can stop in the gas stations there and fill their, fill up with gas. The restaurants are gonna get hit, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a bad summer. So you talk economics, that's causing great economic failure to our, to our area.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie.
Mr. Bennett?
Hello, thank you, Councilman Guthrie, for bringing this forward for conversation. I know I'm most known for my work in kindergarten, but I also have a minor in secondary science education, and I taught, I see a former student in the audience, but I taught earth and space science in, in college at Wacomco, in Wacomco County. I'm mostly focused on environmental science, and more specifically, our waterways and our watersheds. And, you know, we talk a lot about cost, but as a rhetorical question, I ask, you know, what, what are we willing to pay to have certainty in our hands when we pick up a glass or bottle of water and know it won't make us sick? I think that's a question that we're all thankful we don't have to ask ourselves, but some communities do. You know, some communities have to ask themselves, is it safe to bathe my baby? Is it safe to drink that water? Can I cook spaghetti on my stove? And we have to ask ourselves, how much value is there in not having to ask ourselves that question? I know we've talked some tonight about accountability, but when we're speaking about environmental impacts that come immediately, and will take tremendous amount of time and effort to remediate, I'm not sure I know what effective accountability looks like in reversing that impact in a real substantial way. No fine or fee, as Councilman Guthrie pointed out, is gonna be adequate in addressing that impact. And prevention, as a, a community, is so much more efficient and valuable than accountability. When you listen to that list of counties that already have these protections in place, most of them touch the water. From here, Anarundel County down to Wacomco County, we recognize that when we touch the water, there comes privilege with that, of being able to be a boater, or have the views, or the commerce that comes with being on the water, but there also becomes responsibility in protecting that water long-term. And as Councilman Guthrie pointed out, it's a lot harder to manage 100 acres plus of loose soil than 20 acres of loose soil. So when we have protection regulations on fencing and so on, again, 20 acres is a lot more manageable than 100 plus. And as far as enforcement, I mean, we have very limited staffing within our county government, you know, as it is to make sure our parks are clean and that our roads are maintained. I know myself and many of us send our legislative aides out to drive our roads and check on things, just 'cause there's not enough staff to be everywhere at all times. So unless you have, you know, particular development that the community is paying particular attention to, it's very easy for things to go amiss. And if those things go amiss for a week and a big rainstorm comes, well, there's that loose soil into our waterways, and you can't take it back. We can't take back time, and without a lot of money, we can't take back that soil that's now in our waterways, suffocating our seagrass, killing our biodiversity, and making irrepro- almost irreversible damage to our environment. So I just think it's very important that we're not so cavalier in that conversation of, oh, we'll hold them accountable. Are you gonna go and scoop out all the soil and make sure the water's clean again? Because, you know, money isn't gonna make my water clean, but prevention is gonna keep my water clean. So I just think it's important that we think about this in a way that goes beyond dollars and cents, even though there is a legitimate dollar and cents conversation to have.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett, Mr. Janjordana.
Thank, thank you, Council President. Deion, thanks for this information. I, I think, and I don't know the answer, and I don't know if you know the answer, but is the state involved in the cleanup of this? And do we know what it would cost? What's the actual cost to clean this up? And one of the things I'm thinking of is, there should be some kind of, maybe a performance bond, as opposed to, you know, I know there's fines and fees, but a performance bond, so that if somebody does do the damage to the environment like this, that they were bonded, and it's a lot easier to collect on a bond than it is on a fine, they put up their assets, you know, there is construction, a lot of construction projects that people have to be bonded. When you build a building, you know, they have to get bonded for, for things, and the bonds are very specific. So I don't know what the cost is to clean this up, if, if DPW has looked into this, if they've, you know, determined that, hey, you've done, you know, $600,000 worth of damage to ecosystem, and also if the state's involved. So I'd, I'd be curious to find that out and see what kind of information you have, and if we have to reach out to DPW and, and then find out where that stands, but, you know, maybe looking at-
Well, part, part of my report, I, I mentioned that, because I saw that in, in some of the paperwork I got, to, to do a, when it, when it gotta get in there and, and drain, or take out all the soil that's been dropped in that river, it's gonna cost over a million dollars, just to do that Gunpowder River. So, you know, there's, $20,000 fine.
And I don't know if these, these developers are required to put up a performance-
They are, they have a performance bond, in fact, we had to initiate that, for them to come down and fix the, the area that you saw up there where, where the sewer and, and the water lines went, and it, and it caused the, the football field to overflow. Parks and Rec out on them big time, and held their bond till they went and straightened all that area out. So they did come down and straighten that area out, but it, it's, it's, the, the problem is, this is massive, you know? It, it's just so hard to control anything that, this large. And, and I'm sure, when I read all those 20-some counties and all that have the 20-acre requirement, that, that, they, there must be a reason why all those counties have the same thing that we had for generations, until 20, the latter part of 2017. And since then, that's what happened, and you saw all the videos, excuse me, all the pictures of, of the mud running down the streams, and we have actual films and stuff, we could show you a lot more, but, you know, I didn't wanna bring all that stuff, we'd be here forever, which we do have some people that are gonna testify also.
Yep, yep. Mr. Riley?
Yes, I'd like to firstly, I'm not sure we're getting our drinking water from Ramsey Island, but in any case, you said it hasn't been a problem for over 100 years, and I think so, because this is an outside contractor, it's not a local contractor. I've talked to many contractors, and they're saying, why you punish us when this is an out-of-state contractor? So I was wondering how you come up with these fines? I think they're still pretty low. All the contractors I talked to say, Jim, you can, you can raise them as high as you want, because we play by the rules. Here's an out-of-stater that's not playing by the rules. So my question to you is, Councilman, how, how did you come up with these fines? Can we increase them?
I, I doubled all of them.
I know you doubled them, but can we triple them, can we quadruple them?
Put in amendment, I'll support it.
Okay.
Make it any number you want, I'm with you.
Thank you.
And I agree, because the cost of doing business, you know, to straighten out a mess like this, it's, you know, it's in millions of dollars, you know, and $20,000 fines, you know? A guy, you know, takes out his buddies and to golf tour them, and spends that much money, so.
That's why I never took up golf. Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up from the-
Might be another reason too.
We do, Mr. President, we have 14 this evening.
Can you call your first speaker, and please, remember to be respectful of each other, and you have three minutes.
Monica McHale, followed by Tracy Waite.
Good evening, ma'am, name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Monica McHale, my address is 2103 Wyndham Court, Beller, Maryland, 21015. I apologize for getting here late, but I was trying to listen in.
You're fine, ma'am.
Thank you. I come from Virginia, I work in Virginia, and I live here in this county, I've lived here since I was born. So I work at Fort Belvoir, and it takes about two hours just to get my three minutes, so I'm very grateful for that. I'm very grateful for you guys that you're here every week, and for our community members like Perryman and Abingdon Woods, for you guys for really being here every week when I feel like sometimes I can't, but we'll let the emotions go. I've recently just heard about this new bill, 24-11, where you're trying to limit the grading size to 20 acres at a time, and I was listening to Mr. Guthrie on the way here, that the runoff from Ridgely's Reserve in Joppa seems to be entering gunpowder. And I wanna make a suggestion, I don't know, as an, as an amendment to the bill, I like the idea of 20 acres as opposed to clearing unlimited land that, that they can develop. So I would even like to make another suggestion, that's just to wait until the whole Development Advisory Committee process is approved, not to issue the grading permits before we know what's actually going there. In respect to Caddy Farms, the former lands of Caddy Farms, that was cleared two years ago, and I still see geese and, and small wildlife on there, not as much now because it's cleared, but that was cleared two years ago, and thankfully, nothing yet has been put on it. I've heard rumors of Costco, and I don't wanna start rumors, but I saw traffic cameras when I came up last weekend, around the perimeter, five cameras, approximately five, which I know is pretty hefty, 'cause I checked the cost just for one, back when we were talking about Perryman. So I just, I really would like you guys to consider waiting on giving the permits to do the grading, and then once you do have the grading, to do it by section, so that you can manage the waste runoff as it, or the soil erosion runoff as it's happening. But preferably, when they do the stabilizings, 'cause I've, I've even looked at Abingdon Woods, I see that the stabilizing that they put down now looks like gravel, and when I bring it up to, to Bob Casley and their administration, I was told that is a form of stabilization. And it's just very heartbreaking, 'cause in my mind, when I come every weekend, I see the project advancing further, instead of stabilizing it with plastic and being less invasive in the stabilization, but I, I know that's still a form of stabilization. So I just, I wish that we would make sure that the runoff doesn't hurt our wildlife, and that we do it in, in respect to having the process finalized, and not really starting it in advance of the project, and knowing what's gonna be there. So, and the last thing I wanted to say is, I believe that grading permits should not be issued prior to final plan approvals, and not started in advance of projects. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am, name and address, please.
Hello, Tracy Waite, 617 Foxcroft Drive, Beller, Maryland. County Council President, County Councilman, County Council Lady. I am, speaking in support of Councilman Guthrie's bill with two amendments, but I'll speak about one. I strongly support resumption of a smaller 20-acre maximum. I witnessed the failure to manage stormwater runoff and control sedimentation of the Haha Branch, following clearing of 70 acres at Abingdon, Abingdon Woods. We had the same problem with muddy stream running into Otter Point Creek, and filling up Otter Point Creek and the Bush River. So Harford County is really contributing a lot of mud to the Chesapeake Bay. Had clearing been limited to 20 acres, through some specific number of rain events greater than one inch, the impact of the clearing could have been better assessed before more damage was done to critical local waterways. I also support the bill because it increases fines. However, I'm opposed to Section J1, lines eight through 10 on page three, which state that the fines collected, quote, "shall be used to correct damage that is the result of the failures to implement or maintain erosion or sediment controls." Why would the county issue a fine as a deterrent to shoddy work, only to use that money to repair some of the dam- repair some of the damage done by the developer? Should the costs of shoddy work not be borne solely by the one responsible for the damage? I would suggest striking that section completely and passing the bill without it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Michael Charlton followed by Sally Labar.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Michael Charlton, 203 Terrace View Court, Churchville, Maryland. In 2017, the Maryland Department of the Environment changed the definition in Section 26 dot 17 dot 01 of a grading unit from a maximum of 20 acres to the maximum contiguous area allowed to be graded at a given time. Removing the 20 acre reference allows the local soil conservation districts and the MDE the flexibility needed to look at large projects holistically. They recognize that forcing every project to a 20 acre limit was not always the best for the environment. A 20 acre limit created some circumstances where construction was prolonged due to earth moving multiple times from each 20 acres instead of just once. This meant there was more opportunities for sediment to be released from the site. With construction taking longer, there would be potentially more rain events that can cause a release of sediment. Not only could the sediment pollution be greater when forced into smaller grading units, but each time dirt is moved, heavy machinery pollutes the atmosphere with greenhouse gas emissions. Moving dirt multiple times equals more air pollution. This also makes all construction projects more expensive. Housing affordability is at an all time low and this adds cost to a new home. It also adds cost to new schools and other public works projects will also increase. The county just approved the purchase of part of Eppelmar for a new school. This legislation will make that school more expensive. In summary, this legislation might do more harm than good to the environment, but it will make it more expensive. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Hi, I am Sally Labar and I represent Friends of Harford. Our address is P.O. Box 294, Abingdon, Maryland 21009. Friends of Harford supports the sediment control bill as described. It reverses a bill from before that eased the control of our set of sediment into our waterways. That bill eliminated the grading limit. It permitted developers to use their discretion in determining the size and extent of a contiguous area to be graded at any given time. We believe that this lack of control led to notable negative sediment issues as shown on the pictures. We should not be famous nationally for this disaster. Any consequence imposed for, against any, to control any behavior must be targeted, it must be immediate, and it must be painful enough, significant enough to change that behavior immediately. A stitch in time saves nine. We can't afford, no one can afford, the developer, the homeowners, no one can afford the true cost of cleaning up a disaster like that. It was abominable to be allowed to happen to begin with. We're glad that it raises the fine. We're glad that it raises the individual civil fine as well. We're glad that it reduces the time required in between imposing those fines because of behavior refusing to change. We recommend that this passes. Friends of Harford supports it. I do have a bit of information, some, to put things into context based on Mr. Pennman's questions. These are just some calculations. An average warehouse size is 17,000 square feet. A large warehouse is considered to be about 100,000 square feet. The majority of warehouses are between 10 and 25,000 square feet. Only a very few are a half a million square feet. A half a million square feet is less than 12 acres. That puts it into context. So a million square feet would still only be 22, 23 acres. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Nancy Post followed by Amy DePietro.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Nancy Post, 411 Green Tree Circle, Abingdon. This, I needed a complete rewrite, can't do it in real time. I want to, this is better late than never. Thank you, Councilman Guthrie, for your efforts. It impacted your home, so, so you understand. We've been warning the, the government here for years before the first shovels have gone in the ground that this is what we faced with the favoring of developers over residents and just build, 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 pop, you know, just hand the candy out to the developers. The root cause of the problem is that permits are being issued where they should not be and how they should not be. That's the root cause. And monitoring is hit or miss. You say there's not enough employees. Every, the county's responsible for issuing the permits, so needs to be responsible for making sure they are not violated. It should not be left up to us busy citizens trying to do everyone else's job in addition to our own jobs. So the fines need to be heavier so that they feel the pinch and they should be fined as many times as they violate. If they don't violate, there's not an issue. And with all the overbuilding of Harford County over the decades, you know, I've seen it in the last over decade I've been here, we haven't seen the streams polluted to this extent. But when the limits go off the developers, then we see these sorts of problems. And I'd like to know why the developers at Abingdon Woods haven't been fined for what they've done to the Haha Branch. And we're going to unfortunately, if it continues, see pictures like that of a permanently destroyed Otter Point Creek Estuary Center. I don't think God put these things in place for us to destroy just for money and greed and power. So, so I ask all of you, as if it was your home being destroyed and it will, our water and our food is affected. If you eat crabs and whatnot, so if it hasn't hit your home yet, it will, but it's hitting our homes and our quality of life now. So please do the right thing and support this bill and even make it stronger. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Amy DePietro, 3445 A Box Hill Corporate Center Drive, Abingdon, Maryland. Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm a licensed engineer with over 20 years of experience in designing land development sites, including stormwater and management and sediment control. I am here to express my concerns with Bill 24 dash 011. Though well intended, limiting the grading units in Harford County to 20 acres or less will not achieve the desired results of decreased sediment runoff. In fact, the Maryland Department of the Environment removed the 20 acre limit in 2017 because MDE themselves recognized that the limit was causing delays in construction projects that ultimately led to the land being more vulnerable to runoff and erosion issues. Harford County followed suit. Sediment control is all about implementation and constant maintenance. The controls approved by the state for use on construction sites are meant to be temporary and need to be inspected and maintained throughout the course of a six project to be successful. State and county regulations and the sequence of construction already dictate that land cannot be cleared until the controls are adequately installed. Denuded areas need to be stabilized with vegetation within seven days, not left open to the elements for months. Adhering to the 20 acre grading unit will only drive up construction costs. I would encourage you to create legislation that focus on, focuses on the implementation and management of site construction. There are numerous projects of this size under construction within the county that don't have these same issues. Please don't punish the many for the actions of a few. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Bill Timnik followed by Gloria Moon.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Bill Timick, 425 Latimer Road, Joppa, Maryland. I think I sent you something in writing already, but I want to just address some of Mr. Pennman's concerns frankly. At least, there have been at least seven shutdowns of this site. Primarily it's because when it rains, the silt fences get crushed by the runoff. I've got pictures going back five years, including to this sewer line being put in. Second, Mr. Timick says other waters flow into that area. He's actually right, but those waters don't have this problem. I was driving up Route 7 from Baltimore across the big and little gunpowder. They were fine. They were, it was after heavy rain. They, they were, they were full, but they were not dirty. Got to the Foster Branch. It's orange again. All of the red, orange was coming in from Foster Branch going into the rest of the rivers and then the tide pushes it back in. So I can understand why he thought it was coming from other rivers, but it's coming from ours and going back in. So probably two thirds of those pictures that go back are mine because I've been complaining about this for five years. And there's been no control. There's been essentially no fines. And it, I think the problem is most developers know most of the people in charge and so they can't do it. I like, I think the idea of mandatory fines, that the court decides and the court doesn't necessarily know anybody, it could be objective. I think it's hard for local folk to fine local folk. It sure, sure hasn't happened based on $20,000 of fines since 2022. I think that's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Was she in trouble?
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Gloria Moon, 2519 Jerusalem Road in muddy Joppa. In, in 2017, this bill came up to reduce the inspections as well as taking off all of the controls on restricting the amount of grading. I'm sure back then what happened was, and the, and the vote was six to one. Council District A, Mike Perone voted against it. All the rest of the council said this is fine. I'm sure the, the contractors of the business community came out and told the council, well, you know, this is our county. We're not going to mess it up. We're going to be good guys. We're not going to let that dirt go off into the water. It took five years, but the dirt's off in the water. Now you can blame an out of county, out of state developer, but there is no rule that says you have to have a county developer. So I would say if you refuse this bill, turn it down. We can probably have this discussion again in five years. All the other counties that Mr. Guthrie announced, and you did a great job by the way, they kept the 20 years. Why should we be different? Let's go back to the way it was. I see no reason not to. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
John Malamo followed by Elizabeth Chamberlain.
Ma'am, you're thinking I know how to use this.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Give me just a minute there, please. Sir, good evening to you and your colleagues. John P. Malamo, 2402 Eagleview Drive. Now, Mr. Guthrie, who signed the stormwater management plan on the plot that you're describing? See, basic rule of law, whoever signs that drawing is liable for any damages. The county signed it, the developer signed it. Who signed the drawing? Find out and go to those people. Now, in general, I support this bill, but I got to tell you, one size doesn't fit all. When you look at what's required, you got to evaluate the site. You got to figure out the complexity, the ground, the surface, everything about it. And when you say, okay, we're going to develop it and we're going to rip 100 acres, you got to have an adequate stormwater management plan. And likewise with the contractor. You got local, regional, national and international. Anybody here from Peter Keewitt, Bechtel, Fluor, Morrison Knutson? No. You're not going to get the international contract with the capacity to manage 100 acres. You'll get a local or a regional contractor and those assets need to be considered. Now, when you start talking about the fines, it's too late. You're already in a recovery mode. You can't, you can't say we're going to fine these people and it's going to be okay. It won't. To your point, Mr. G and J O'Donnell, you get a bond. No contractor wants to have the bond called, none of them, because it adds to their continuing cost. And so you put the bond together so that the county can call the bond and it can do the work to remediate the site. That's how you get the attention of the contractors. And you require the developer to post the bond because once the ground contractor is done with the dirt work, he's gone. He doesn't stick around and it's left to the developer to figure out how to fix anything that's left. So get the developer and the contractor that's doing the dirt work to post the bond. And the bond should be sufficient to remediate the site and bring it back to a condition that doesn't have all the runoff that you're concerned about. And that's the way you do it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Elizabeth Chamberlain, 173 Glenview Terrace. I ask tonight, I urge each of you to vote for passage of this bill. It is an improvement from where we are right now. It moves us forward to a slightly more protected position, which is the right direction. Also, a unanimous vote on this issue from our council would really help this county right now. I would ask for stronger measures personally, much stronger such as stop killing the natural systems of roots that are already in place that stop erosion mighty effectively, replant those that have been killed in areas that they shouldn't have. And I'm glad you touched on some more injunctive measures when a violation happens. But if, if you're offering forward progress, I for one am glad to accept it. I would be glad for us all to unite around this and to see our elected representatives do the same. And I, I wanted to add on something because Mr. Penn was asking, is this happening in other places or is it just that site? And it's happening in many other places. This is, sorry for the small video. I can submit it if you'd like, but it's along Deer Creek and I, my family and I, we fish a lot. We crab, we boat, we do all those things. And Deer Creek is, that's a development where, that's exactly where our favorite trout fishing spot is. And one day we went there and this had all been cleared out and mud was running into the creek and we, all the fisher people had to move way downstream. The best spot was destroyed. And Deer Creek, I, I don't know if that spot is in the development envelope. I'm not sure, but it doesn't seem like it is. And the state of Maryland has And the state of Maryland has recognized Deer Creek as a stronghold watershed with the third-best biodiversity ranking in the state. And so it's a treasure, and such a catastrophic thing, destroying such a treasure. Please pay close attention to that. And thank you, Mr. Guthrie, for giving voice to this, and the rest of you who identified ways to even strengthen it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Aravinda Pillalamari, followed by Keely Pillalamari.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Good evening, members of the county council. My name is Aravinda, Aravinda Pillalamari. My address is 712 South Shamrock. I come here to support this bill. I would urge all of you to find ways to strengthen it further. In the beginning, Councilwoman Guthrie described how this would reduce runoff and ultimately reduce impacts to health and costs of dredging the river with increasing frequency. That will only happen if the fines are sufficiently, you know, strong enough to actually serve as a deterrent, not as a means to collect money to remedy after the fact. After the fact is too late, Councilwoman Bennett eloquently spoke to the precious value of clean water that cannot be ensured simply through fines, especially when they're paltry compared to the kinds of profits that these kinds of developments are expected to make. I would also like to note that the limiting of the grading permits actually has another potential benefit to our county. Earlier, Tracy Waite from Harford County Climate Action alluded to the situation at Abingdon Woods, where, you know, a large patch was clear-cut in a very short period of time. I believe it's 70 acres. But during this time, there was actually a challenge, the forest conservation permit. But while that was making its way through the review and the courts, this cutting of the forest was already done, which can never come back. There were old trees, it harmed the land, water, air, the neighboring communities, the wildlife. The fact is, the process of giving permits and approving projects in our county is far from perfect. Some would argue that it's heavily skewed in favor of the developers, and many things are rushed through. So if this can in any way slow that process, it could serve as a check on wrong decisions. Ultimately, the community organizations, I believe led by Chesapeake Bay Foundation, who challenged the forest conservation permit, actually won that challenge, meaning that that permit should not have been granted. I would go back and argue that there have been several mistakes along the way that led to the approval of the project that, you know, consigned Abingdon Woods to be cut 300 acres. So far, only 70 acres have been cut, but in the original plan, we would have lost all 300 acres. The cause is not lost. We are still trying to save Abingdon Woods and all forests in this county. There was a time when some members of this council acknowledged that the original decision to include Abingdon Woods in the enterprise zone itself was mistaken. I agree with that. I hope that one day, we are able to reverse that. While I do support this bill, if it were strengthened, and with some of the amendments suggested, and perhaps Councilwoman Guthrie feels that it's one of the most important bills that we could ever pass, I hope that this would lead to the passage of even more important bills that would protect the forest, the rivers, the air, and the neighborhoods of Harford County. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Keely Pillalamari, and my address is 712 South Shamrock Road, Bel Air. I'm also here to support Bill 24-11 on sediment control. Thank you, Councilwoman Guthrie, for introducing this important bill. I'm really happy to see the 20-acre grading cap come back. I think that's very important in reducing erosion, which, as we've just seen, has some shocking effects on our waterways, which is detrimental, as has been discussed, both economically and environmentally. It's bad for, the erosion that this bill would help mitigate, that erosion is bad for the waterways, it's bad for the rivers, the plants, the fish, the animals, the children there, the people boating, people fishing and crabbing, as someone mentioned. And I would just, I would urge all of you to vote in favor of this bill, to prioritize the people and the wildlife of the area over the desires of developers who may just want to make a quick buck at the expense of the ecosystem. Destructions such as that at Abingdon Woods, that was just spoken about, is, takes, as Councilwoman Bennett said, nearly irreversible. It would take a very long time to replant that area. Some of those trees were over 100 years old, about, I think around 40. A lot of those trees were over 100 years old, and it's quite a large area. So I would urge all of you to vote yes on this, to remember that your constituents live along the river, you're also responsible for the ecosystem of the river, of this county, and not for the developers. They can figure it out. There was some concern about, will people be able to develop an area of land that's this small? Well, they've been doing that for many years before this change. They can figure it out. So I would urge all of you to support this bill, and to support the amendments to make the fine higher. Like Councilwoman Guthrie said, make that fine as high as you want. The idea is that no one will have to pay it, because everyone will follow the rule. So, and I would also support the additional regulations on runoff that were suggested by some previous speakers, which is taking Abingdon Woods out of the enterprise zone entirely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sal Sabatino, followed by Theo Legarder.
My name is Sal Sabatino. I live over in Barrington Village, off of 924. Being someone that's lived up here since 99, and ran around this county back in the '60s, and watched the growth, and listened to some of these hearings that I've come to, you guys have a hard slog to keep things under control. But what a lot of people in here said, the development issues are not followed as closely as they should be. And like others have said, the developer and the contractor are not the friends of the neighborhood, because once they build, they're gone. They take their money, they take their jobs, they go to the next place. When Catty Holmes leveled that ground down on 924, it was like it came out of nowhere. And the reason is, this council doesn't do right by the citizens of Harford County. These hearings should be put on the internet and televised for those who can't get out to come over and hear about it, and have to wait for six months to find out why Catty Holmes leveled all those trees overnight. A lot of people aren't happy about it. And, I mean, this is part of what I think has to be talked about. Mr. Guthrie was right on the money. Being somebody who lived on the Chesapeake Bay when I was a kid, in the Magathie River, I can tell you when it was pristine, and after a couple hurricanes, not anymore. So this is not something new to us, and new to you guys. You've been watching it, you've been hearing about it. Now it's time to do something about it. And yes, bonding will put a stop to abusive behavior by everybody. So just had my two sons. This is a great county. It's got to slow down, because just too much is changing too fast, and money is God. Not my life. So please, I appreciate all the time, appreciate the people that are here that are a lot more articulate on what they were talking about, because they're right there. It's got to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, council president and council. My name is Theo Legarder. I serve as the Gunpowder Riverkeeper, and I want to acknowledge the scouts are here, because the axiom for the scouts is be prepared. And to give you context from, and maybe in retort to the development community that spoke earlier about the 2017 removal of that grading unit at MDE, there were only five entities that spoke and provided comments statewide in removal of that 2017 grading unit. Not all were for. In fact, I am a member of Water Keepers Chesapeake, that helps all of the waterkeepers and riverkeepers in the Bay region. All 18 of us do a lot of policy and advocacy work directly with MDE. But of the list that also spoke to the idea of removal, and it wasn't many, it was Prince George's Soil Conservation Board, the Maryland Building Industry Association, and the Utility Scale Solar Energy Coalition, in addition to a coalition of environmental organizations that was counted as one comment. It doesn't give you a full picture of what a grading unit would look like from an enforcement standpoint. Having the personal experience of taking my SCIF that we use for monitoring for bacteria and microplastics from Dundee Marina, July 3 of 2022, and seeing a mud line starting at Maxwell Point at APG, and following it all the way through the Amtrak line up to Foster's Branch, that Monday, actually it was Tuesday, because Monday was the holiday observed, I spoke to an MBE enforcement official and said, "How could it be that this much land was graded at one time?" And they pointed to this 2017 rule change. So with certainty, I can assure that Harford County, that based on the number of inspections the state and the county has undergone, the number of stop work orders, that the contractor is being subject to, and corrective action orders, the state is not going to help Harford County. Only Harford County will help Harford County. Only you council folks will help the citizens and the 26 species of finfish that spawn and use the tidal gunpowder as a nursery ground. In the fall, most years, we have crabbing boats come up from Chrisfield to crab the tidal gunpowder. They haven't done so in two years. When Virginia Institute Marine Science called me midsummer last year, and they said, "Did you know you've lost 30% of the SAV, the submerged aquatic vegetation, the tidal gunpowder, when all the other Bay areas are increasing 10% to 15%? And do you know why that might happen?" And I said, "I have a pretty good idea. Let's look at some satellite photos." So I'd entreat all of you to read the Bay Journal article. It's very short, it's very succinct, maybe more so than I am tonight. But I am in full support of this bill that Deion Guthrie has put together. It's 24011, and I do think it's a step in the right direction, and I do think that Harford County needs this kind of improvement and process. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
With no other speakers, this will conclude the public hearing for 24011. And the drop dead date on this legislation is June 5, so this will be looked at at a future meeting. We will go ahead and take a short recess at this time. Thank you. Chair calls the order Legislative Session Day 24-014. I would ask you, actually ask Troop 978 to come forward, please. I'd like you to lead us in the prayer of the pledge this evening. I'd ask you to all, please, join us in standing for the pledge. Whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come to you in prayer this evening, asking for your guidance and wisdom. We thank you for the many blessings in our lives. Lord, help us to always communicate with respect and understanding as we navigate through the people's business. Lead us in our discussions, helping us to seek the best results and decisions for all. We ask that you continue to watch over all our military, law enforcement, and first responders, keep them safe and out of harm's way. Father, we ask these things and more in your most holy name. Amen. Amen. Thank you. Agenda item number four, presentation of proclamations. This is employee recognition for years of service. Mr. Cahill.
Where's Robert F. Cahill Jr. is being recognized for his 40 years of service to Harford County, and whereas Mr. Cahill began his career with Harford County on April 3, 1984, he was appointed People's Counsel to represent the interests of all the public in all matters and proceedings preliminary to arising out of or affecting the zoning classification or reclassification of land in a county. Mr. Cahill represented protestants in hundreds of cases, and effectively negotiated conditions to minimize the potential impact to adjoining property owners. And whereas Mr. Cahill was appointing zoning hearing examiner on October 21, 2003, he bought with him a wealth of knowledge and expertise. Over the years, he has meticulously issued 549 zoning appeal and reclassification decisions, demonstrating his unparalleled commitment to fair and judicious proceedings. And whereas Mr. Cahill has consistently executed his responsibilities with unwavering integrity and professionalism, establishing an exemplary track record deserving utmost respect and honor. Now, therefore, we, the county council of Harford County, Maryland, on this seventh day of May, 2024, do hereby recognize Robert F. Cahill Jr., 40 years of service, and express our heartfelt appreciation for his commitment and dedication to the citizens of Harford County.
I want to be clear, this is not his last day for work. He agreed to be around for a couple of more years, at least. But 40 years of service, we couldn't let it go by. We also might want to wish you a happy birthday.
Oh, yeah. We also want to wish you a happy birthday, too. So, but I'm very honored to be here with you this evening, not only as someone that works with you, but someone that has known you more than this 40 years. I was a very young fellow when I met you the first time, a very young fellow. But listen, we want to bring up a few other people to kind of recognize you for your service, those that work closer with you than I do, or any else, one else. Dottie, would you come forward, please?
Surprised?
Shocked.
For those who don't know me, I'm Dottie Smith, and I have been working with Bob for 40 years. 40 years. I couldn't have wished for a better work environment, a better boss, a more exciting work. I mean, zoning hearings are like, they're really rocking. So, Bob, thank you so much for being a great friend and boss, and I don't know what I would do without you.
Anyone else, council?
Congratulations, Bob, and I couldn't ask for a better mentor and the leader that you are. Hardworking, fair, honest, and congratulations, you deserve this.
Thank you, Bill.
Bob, I know we go back a few years, too. And when I was on the council before for 12 years, we'd had a lot of run ins together, not apart. They were all together. But you always did a great job. And I looked down on all them cases, 549 cases. How many were correct? No, I know. They were all right, you know? You had the last word. Congratulations, and I'm glad you're still going to be around a couple more years.
So congratulations. I've only had a short time to work with you, but I do appreciate your expertise. And I am tickled to death that you're going to be around for a while longer because we need that knowledge. And Dottie made sure, two or three times, that I said protestants correctly and not something else, so.
But Bob, I think it's important for my colleagues, and as they were alluding to, the fact of the institutional knowledge that you bring with you to every zoning hearing. I have no idea what we're going to do down the road when you decide it's time to go to Rock Hall full time. So but I want to present you with this proclamation on behalf of my colleagues.
Well, thank you, Councilmen and Jessica, Councilwoman. So I've been here a long time. I didn't really realize. It was 40 years. I guess we have Dottie to thank for that, right, Dottie? Counting up those, all those many, many years. So I started when John Hardwick was Council President. So I've seen a few councils come and go. Sometimes they've gone not too easily, but they went. And I have to say, job, and I'm sitting here as observers of what you all have done, job has gotten much, much, much harder. I mean, this is a, this is the life you all have, professional life you have here in existence is so much different from what it was 40 years ago. And I respect what you do. It's got to be just extremely difficult. Nothing was videotaped back then. There were a few people who'd come to the council meetings. The councilmen would show up, and council ladies, because we had, we've had females on the council throughout these 40 years, I believe. They'd show up maybe an hour or two before the council meetings, and that was it. That was their work week. Their work week is a couple hours. So things have changed a lot. I've seen it change. It's just gotten a lot more difficult, and I wouldn't want your job for anything. So I respect what you do, and thank you all for what you do. And thank you for this honor. Thanks very much.
Yeah. Hey, Bob. Can I have you come forward one more time? A few years ago, the council president decided to have, and the council administrator decided to have a coin made, a special coin. They're numbered. We've only given out a few, and we'd like to have you have this one. Thanks.
Thank you very, very much.
Yes.
That's great.
Thank you. Agenda number five, Consideration of Petitions, Applications, Appointments, and Nominations. Council appointment, Hartford TV Advisory Board. Ms. Sodles?
Council President, I move to approve the appointment of Donald Wayne Mathis.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved and seconded to approve the new appointment of Don Mathis. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
My pleasure, Don. Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Jandrewdano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
My pleasure also.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in affirmative, zero in a negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Mr. Mathis, thank you for all that you do. Executive appointment, Hartford TV Advisory Board. Ms. Sodles?
Council President, I move to approve the new appointment of Cindy Mumbi.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jandrewdano. It's been moved and seconded to approve the new appointment of Ms. Mumbi. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Jandrewdano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in affirmative, zero in negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Hartford County Public Library Board of Trustees, student appointment. Ms. Sodles?
Council President, I move to approve the student appointment of Ellie Hanson.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. It's been moved and seconded to approve the new appointment of Ellie Hanson. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Jandrewdano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in affirmative, zero in negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Is Ms. Hanson in the audience?
Thank you.
Hartford Center Board of Trustees, Mr. Bennett may have a motion.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the new appointments of Lisa Snodgrass and Charles Kelly Jr. to the Hartford Center Board of Directors.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jandrewdano. It's been moved and seconded to approve the new appointments of Snodgrass and Mr. Kelly. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Jandrewdano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in affirmative, zero in negative, the appointments are hereby approved. Agriculture Land Preservation Advisory Board, Mr. Jandrewdano.
Council President, I move to approve the new appointment of William B. Amos.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved and seconded to approve the new appointment of Bill Amos. Is there any discussion? I think it's important that we have some comments made for Mr. Amos. I don't know how many years he's served working with Ag Preservation. I don't see him in the audience, but I want to thank him for his years of service. And I appreciate the fact that he's still staying in touch and serving on the advisory board. Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Jandrewdano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Absolutely.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in affirmative, zero in negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Advisory Board on Aging, Mr. Jandrewdano may have a motion.
Council President, I move to approve the new appointment of Frederick Circus and the reappointments of Heather Murphy, Arlene Callender, Susan Havilin, Crystal Patton, Tina Hoffenberger, Kimberly Cook, and Catherine Clip.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Penman. It's been moved and seconded to approve the new appointment and reappointments. Is there any discussion? Mr. Jandrewdano?
So I just want to say a few words about Fred, Dr. Fred, as he is. He's, he's worked at Stella Maris, I think, for a couple, for years. Very involved. I've seen him with patients, elderly patients, at all hours. So I think he's a great fit for this board. And I also know Kimberly Cook real well. And I think she's, you know, glad we're reappointing her, too. She works for Heart to Heart, and she's a big advocate also of senior aging. So, so just want to say that, my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jandrewdano. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Jandrewdano?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in negative, the appointments are hereby approved. Any of these individuals here this evening? Ah ha. Congratulations. Thank you. Agenda number six, Special Presentations. We have none. Seven, Approval of Minutes, Public Hearing, April 16th, 2024. Legislative Day 24-013, April 16th, 2024. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing no corrections, the minutes stand approved. Eight, Introduction and Consideration of Resolutions. Resolution 010-24, Height, Bush River and Gunpowder Rivers Replacement Bridge. Mr. Guthrie?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've got some grabbing the limelight tonight.
Just need a motion, Mr. Guthrie.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 010-24.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jandrewdano. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Resolution 010-24. Now, Mr. Guthrie, if there's any discussion?
Just briefly, you'll be happy I said that. What this resolution is, that we have railroad bridges both covering the Gunpowder and the Bush River. And there is, what's going on right now is all the railroad bridges from Baltimore City to New York are being replaced. A $1.9 trillion project with a T. The Gunpowder River Bridge is going to cost 30 million, and the Bush River Bridge is going to cost about 18 million. They were 125 years old, so it's probably about time they did something with them. But what we're concerned about is that since they're going to be replacing them, we want them to raise them up a little higher. So boats in today's world can get under them. When it was built 125 years ago, they were going through there in canoes and rowboats. Wasn't too many parapods going under them bridges. They clear about 12 foot under regular tide, but waters are rising, and we're not seeing that kind of clearance anymore out there. And since they're going to be replacing their bridge, this, this resolution, it spells out a whole bunch of whereas's which the proper people will read. We are requesting them on the, therefore, I'll read, is the County Council of Hartford County, Maryland hereby urges Amtrak to design and construct the replacement bridges for the Bush River and the Gunpowder River as proposed by the community with the highest practical height, quote, in additional eight to 10 feet preferred, in order to open up the access to the upper part of Chesapeake Bay to more people anytime they desire. And that'll help out the Joppa Town Marina also. I'm sure that there'll be people, once we know how high they're going to raise that, hopefully, there'll be someone attracted to buy that Marina and open it back up for the people. On the Bush River, and they're quite upset, they got two yacht clubs up there, plus a marina, probably have a thousand boaters alone between those three places and the Bush River. They said they're going to raise the Bush River Bridge only three feet from where it is now. Well, that's actually counterproductive because right now, the Bush River Bridge opens. Gunpowder Bridge doesn't. The Bush River Bridge opens Fridays once, Saturdays in the morning and the evening, and Sunday on evening. And boats can go in and out, and they can be as tall as they want. So raising it up three feet is going to take a lot of the sailboaters and boats that have high bridges, they won't be able to get out at all. So we really need to get it up about eight or 10 feet. So we hope this resolution gets in the right hands. We'll make sure it does if the council so moves. The county executive's already written a letter to Amtrak and to our senators and our congressmen to support this. They're all in favor of it. So we've got everybody on board. We just need to sit down with Amtrak and do some negotiations. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Jandrewdano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in a negative, Resolution 010-24 is hereby approved. Before we read Bill 24015 into the record, should be to did anyone answer Crystal's questions today? No. All right. So we'll go ahead and introduce it anyway, but we've got some questions we need to have addressed. Mr. Jandrewdano, please read Bill 24-15 into the record for introduction.
Bill 24-15, Pay and Classification Plan as Introduced, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the County Executive, an emergency act to repeal the Hartford County Pay Plan and Classification Plan, Hartford County Ordinance Number 23-018, and to enact a new Hartford County Pay Plan and Classification Plan to stand in lieu of ordinance repeal to provide a pay plan for county employees, all in accordance with Section 603 of the Charter, and to provide that this act shall not be codified in the Hartford County Code. Public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, June 4th, 2024, at 6:45 PM in East Council Chambers.
Thank you. Mr. Jandrewdano, please read the amendment to the workbook, Grid Master Water and Sewer Plan, please.
Amendment Number 1 to Water and Sewer Master Spring 2024 Update Workbook. In the Water and Sewer Master Plan Spring 2024 Workbook Tables and Grids, tab Insert the Attached Revision Number 3 and Revision Number 4 and Related Sewer Grid A-1 Map. Public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, June 24th, June 4th, 2024, at 6:45 PM in East Council Chambers.
Thank you. Mr. Riley, please read Amendments 1 through 3 to Resolution 007-24 into the record for introduction, please.
Amendment Number 1 on the title page in line 14, after update, insert as amended. Amendment Number 2 on Page 1 in line 6, strike update and substitute updated as amended. And Amendment Number 3 on Page 1, strike beginning with the in the line 9 down through introduction in line 10 and substitute, this resolution shall become effective immediately upon adoption by the County Council of Hartford County, Maryland, and the approval of the Maryland Department of the Environment. This will affect Tax Act 33, Partial 208, located at 308 East Jarrettsville Road in Forest Hill. It's being added to the sewer service area and placed in the S3 category. The property is being recommended for connection to the public sewer system by the Health Department as being in the future best interest of public health and the environment. The public sewer system is presently located directly across Jarrettsville Road from the property. Also affects Tax Map 33, Partial 283, located at 310 East Jarrettsville Road in Forest Hill. It's being added to the sewer service area and placed in the S3 category. The property is being recommended for connection to the public sewer system by the Health Department as being in the future best interest of the public health and the environment. The public sewer system is presently located directly across Jarrettsville Road, adjacent property parcel, and has access to the property. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Mr. Jandrewdano, please read Amendments 1 through 14 to Bill 24-009 into the record.
Amendments 1-14 to Bill 24-009, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the County Executive. Amendment Number 1 on Page 2 in line 22, strike 1,000 feet of and substitute 500 feet of preexisting. Amendment Number 2 on Page 3 in line 4, strike Park or and substitute Park in parentheses. Amendment Number 3 on Page 3 in line 5, strike for any other cannabis dispensary. Amendment Number 4 on Page 3, after line 5, insert B, except as provided in Section A above. No lot on which such establishment is located shall be within one half mile from any other cannabis dispensary. No lot on which such establishment is located shall be within one half mile from any other cannabis dispensary. Amendment Number 5 on page 3 in line 6, strike B and substitute C. Amendment Number 6 on page 3 in line 11, strike C and substitute D. Amendment Number 7 on page 3 in line 16, strike D and substitute E. Amendment Number 8 on page 4 in line 11, strike 1,000 feet of and substitute 500 feet of preexisting. Amendment Number 9 on page 4 in line 15, strike park and substitute park. Strike park and/or substitute park. Or? Park or and substitute park. Okay. Amendment Number 10 on page 4 in line 16, strike any other cannabis dispensary. Amendment Number 11 on page 4, after line 16, insert, except as provided in Section A above. No lot on which such establishment is located shall be within one half mile from any other cannabis dispensary. Amendment Number 12 on page 4 in line 17, strike B and substitute C. Amendment Number 13 on page 4 in line 22, strike C and substitute D. Amendment Number 14 on page 5 in line 4, strike D and substitute E. Amendments to Bill 24-009's Cannabis Dispensary.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordano. Number 11, call for final reading of bills. We have none. 12, enrollment of bills. We have none. 13, unfinished business. We have none. 14, new business, fiscal year 25 council contracts. Council, you have before you copies of the fiscal year 25 contracts. The Personnel Committee recommends the approval of these contracts. We'd like to start with Mr. Cahill Jr., zoning hearing examiner. Mr. Janjordano may have a motion.
Council President, I move to approve the fiscal year 25 contract for Robert F. Cahill Jr., zoning hearing examiner.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's moved and seconded to approve Mr. Cahill. Is there any discussion? I think we kind of hammered on that earlier this evening. Ms. Dixon, color roll.
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Abstain.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being six votes in the affirmative, one abstention, the fiscal year 25 contract for Mr. Robert Cahill Jr., zoning examiner is hereby approved. Mr. Brian Young, People's Council, may I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve the fiscal year 25 contract for Brian K. Young, People's Council.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's moved and seconded to approve Mr. Young. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero and negative, the fiscal year 25 contract for Brian K. Young, People's Council is hereby approved. Mr. Young was here earlier, but I think he stepped out. Andrew Chabalowski, Associate People's Council. Mr. Janjordano may have a motion.
Council President, I move to approve the fiscal year 25 contract for Andrew Chabalowski, Associate People's Council.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's moved and seconded to approve Mr. Chabalowski, Associate People's Council. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero and negative, the fiscal year 25 contract for Andrew Chabalowski, Associate People's Council, is hereby approved. Andrew, thank you for staying here all evening. I saw you come in earlier. We appreciate the service that you provide us. Thank you. Appreciate you. Judge Emory Plitt Jr., Alternate Zoning Hearing Examiner. Mr. Janjordano?
Council President, I move to approve the fiscal year 25 contract for Emory Plitt Jr., Alternative Zoning Hearing Examiner.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Penman. It's been moved and seconded to approve Mr. Plitt. Mr. Kearney, can you speak to this, please?
Yes. Mr. Cahill, right now, has a conflict in a zoning case that was scheduled previously to appear in front of him. And he realized that, I believe, on the day of the hearing. So we needed to find somebody who could hear the case. And Judge Plitt has volunteered to hear this matter for this specific matter. He's not being hired at this point in time as an alternate zoning hearing examiner for the entire fiscal year. It's for the one separate case.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Any other discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero and negative, the fiscal year 25 contract for Emory Plitt Jr., Alternate Zoning Hearing Examiner is hereby approved. Agenda Number 17, comments and input from attending citizens. Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
There are three speakers this evening, Mr. President. Will Graham, followed by David Bauer and Bill Whalen.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Will Graham, 2600 Cool Spring Road, Bel Air. And I'm here tonight to speak about an issue that I don't know if the council is aware of and a lot of citizens, the invasive vines that are in Harford. You looked at me like you don't know what I'm talking about.
Wasn't sure, but go ahead.
Invasive vines that are destroying our woods, all of our woods. I met today with Mayor Edding at the Mon Pot Trail head, and we looked at the Mon Pot Trail Woods. What I can assure you is that within 30 to 40 years, without these invasive vines being addressed, the woods at the Mon Pot Trail are going to be gone. Every tree in the Mon Pot Trail Woods is going to be destroyed. And we can see this happening right now in front of us. In fact, there's six maple trees on the strip right across the street out here. When you leave tonight, if you go by there, take a look at them. Four of the six maple trees have English ivy, Ivy League school ivy, the stuff that looks so nice growing up the walls, destroying our woods. Four of the six trees out there have invasive English ivy growing up them. One of them is dead. So you may want to get a tree company to come and take that tree out, the one in the middle. It's already dead. The rest of them are going to be there. There's invasive ivy growing up the side of the building right here. The woods, if I have, I'm in Harford County Climate Action Group. I started an invasive vine cutting volunteer group that we go out a few times a year and get people to come out and help us, which we've been doing. The reason I'm here speaking tonight is because this spring, what I've seen is shocking. And this is the most urgent situation. I know we have lots of other urgent situations that we face. I know we have budget constraints, resource constraints. What I'm telling you is, and this is not a Bel Air problem, this is not a Harford County problem, it's not a state of Maryland problem. I'm going to be writing to the state, my state elected representatives tomorrow about this. These vines are going to destroy every single tree in woods that we have, eventually in the North American continent. But for right now, what I'm telling you is that this needs to be addressed. And it's not just vines, it's underbrush. There's multi-flower rose bushes which are destroying the ecosystem. They cover the ground and nothing can grow. So there's bare dirt on the ground. And this bare dirt is, when it rains, is eroding down into the rivers and the streams in the bay, Deer Creek, Gunpowder River, all of it. So I've drawn up some documents saying what they are. If you like, I can give you this document and you can look at it. You can, and see, I put what the major invasive vines are here in Harford County. There's also native vines that are, poison ivy is a native vine that's good. The animals and the birds eat the berries and whatnot. I cannot be dramatic enough about this. And you should maybe talk to somebody from University of Maryland about this. But these vines are going to destroy our woods, everything that we have and the ecosystem. And it's a critical, urgent situation. So.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. If you'll just give those documents to Ms. Dixon here, that'd be fine. Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Good evening. I'm David Bauer, 2952 Kirkwall Court, Abingdon. This evening, I have a proposal. I'll begin with some background. Back two to three years ago, one of our state delegates sponsored a bill to replace the hired superintendent of our school district with an elected superintendent. When I researched the topic, I found that elected superintendents are historic relic that have mostly been consigned to history. The vast, vast majority of school system superintendents across the nation are hired. Decades of experience showed it was better to hire superintendents and not elect them. As a personal anecdote, the city I grew up in did not have an elected mayor, but rather a city manager who was hired by the city council. I think it worked much better to have a professional manager who was somewhat removed from politics and who was evaluated by a group that was paying close attention to actual job performance. That brings us to our county. Our previous county executive was publicly accused of retaliation by at least three county council members. Our current county executive has had public fights with at least three other elected officials of his same party, a county council member, our sheriff, and our state's attorney. Add to that the issue with the county auditor's access, the lawsuit against Councilman Bennett, the false attacks against the school system, and all the other things that don't make the newspaper. So I propose that the council form a study committee to look into amending the county charter to replace the elected county executive position with a hired county manager or county administrator. Currently, we are one of just nine counties in Maryland with a county executive. The majority do not. A study committee could compare the different governing structures and how well they do across Maryland, maybe across the nation. A study committee, a study committee could also look into whether smaller amendments would be sufficient and appropriate to help correct the power imbalance that currently exists. My understanding is that amending the charter would require a simple majority of the council to put the item on the ballot and then a simple majority of voters to pass. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Bill Whalen, 415 Cedar Springs Road, Bel Air, Maryland, 21015. First, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Cahill, and I did, for his 40 years of service to Harford County. I thank him as well because I learned a great deal about the zoning code and law by reading his decisions on zoning appeal cases. I actually lost a case to him on a variance, but found it was a very fair decision. As a hearing examiner for the Board of Appeals, which is the county council, I believe he has demonstrated honesty, integrity, accountability, impartiality, transparency, and fairness in every case he has made a final decision on. I've sat in on a lot of his cases, and from my experience, he listens patiently to citizens, I might say, without time limits, providing they're pertinent to the case. Mr. Cahill follows the law, the county charter, the county code, and zoning code, while exercising common sense and fairness in his decision. All you have to do is read his findings of fact and conclusions of the law that lead him to his final conclusion on all cases before him. Seldom has his cases been appealed or overturned. You will probably not see, sitting as a council in these next few years, many cases that even come before you for final argument. Unfortunately, the county attorney believes the executive branch is not obligated to enforce final decisions of the hearing examiner and the Board of Appeals. He believes pursuit of enforcement actions is a policy left to the discretion of the executive branch. I challenge this. It's not defined anywhere in the Harford County Code, the charter or zoning code, and actually, the administration admits to it. From my perspective and the zoning code, the administration does not have a unilateral right to ignore the final decisions of the Board of Appeals. If no appeals are made to the council or circuit court, the hearing examiner's decision becomes the final decision and must be enforced. I believe the council is aware that I've tried to get the administration and council to meet and amend the zoning code to clearly define the authority of the Board of Appeals and the director of planning the zoning. Alterly, an independent Board of Appeals with defined authority. I've made numerous attempts through meetings and written correspondence. Although both parties agree an amendment is needed for clarification or an independent Board of Appeals may better serve the community, no action's been taken. I do thank Mr. Bennett for his interest in doing research on this matter six months ago when attending the Mako. He found the most common setup by other counties was a separate Board of Appeals. I don't necessarily agree or disagree with that concept. However, I have come to the conclusion that ignoring legitimate questions, correspondence, and concerns from citizens has become a common practice of some government personnel, simply hoping an issue or concern will go away through silence. This shows a lack of accountability, credibility, and transparency. What we need is strong enforcement of the law, code, and decisions made. Thank you.
Mr. Whalen, I want to thank you for your comments in reference to Mr. Cahill, and thank you for recognizing the value that he brings to the county.
No doubt about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
Agenda Number 16, business from council members. Gentlemen, I forget which end we went to the last time, but Mr. Bennett, if you're ready?
Sure. May is Asian and Pacific American Heritage Month, so it's honoring the important role that these people have played in our history as a nation. This has been a very busy few weeks. I attended the Harford County Education Foundation's art exhibit, which was their first time hosting this event, but it was really neat to see 200 pieces of artwork from Harford County Public School students, celebrated from pre-K all the way up through senior year. I also attended the Judith Resnick Awards, which was honoring 12 young women, juniors in high school, for their achievements in science and math. These young ladies have had internships and have done tremendous work and study in science and mathematics. It was really neat to hear what they've done and to see them celebrated. I also met with and toured Voices of Hope and got to learn more about the services they provide here in Harford County. They're based out of Aberdeen, and they also do tremendous work in Cecil County. So it was great to meet with them and to see how we can support them better as a county. I attended the Harford County Sheriff's Annual Awards, which many of us did. And I'll leave to fellow council members to speak to in more detail, but it was a great event and it was nice to be there to celebrate those who've done so much to support our community. I attended Somerset Serve in Somerset Manor with the Havity Grace Housing Authority to support with community cleanup. I spent my morning spreading mulch and then my evening cleaning my shoes after spreading mulch. But it was a great event and it was nice to be in the community, helping each other. That same day, I attended the Friends of Harford Annual Meeting, which I look forward to every year. And it was good to hear about the work that's being done and to talk with members of our community about what work needs to continue to be done. Lastly, I attended the retirement celebration of Pastor Norman from Havity Grace United Methodist Church. It was really nice to be in community in celebration of all that he's done for the city of Havity Grace, him and his family, and just the impact that they've had in their decade-plus serving the city of Havity Grace as they get ready to move on to be with family in California. It was just nice to be there, represent our whole council in recognizing them in all that they do beyond Sunday morning to take care of our community. So that's it for tonight.